Okay, why don't we stand to the bench?
I think we did this.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on our agenda, it says, "A meeting with Mary McNeil regarding cemetery trees."
Yes, sir. Ms. McNeil wanted to be on the agenda tonight.
I'm gonna, in case she's running a little, a little late, I'll, we'll move on if she, if she, when she comes, if she comes in, we'll, we'll pick that up then. Um, amendments to the agenda.
I have one, uh, one amendment I'd like to propose. I'd like to propose an executive session under contract negotiation and civil litigation, which are both one BSA 313A1.
Okay, do I have a motion for that?
I make a motion, we do so.
Have a motion from Rich, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Mike seconds it, do we, we know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes from May 27th.
That's a typo, it's, it's May 13th.
Okay, typo, May 13th. Actually, I should've known that. It's today. Let me try that again, approval of the minutes from May 13th.
I make a motion, we do the minutes.
Okay, yeah, motion, do we have, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Rich made the motion, seconded by Mike. Uh, any additions, deletions, changes? Just, just one, uh, under members present, Chad DJ is present and absent, I just wanna, it's, it's just a little cleanup on, on the copy that, that we have, just, under, Chad was absent.
Were you here or not?
I was not here.
Not here. Had him in two places, I'm pretty sure he wasn't here, so I just wanted the record to show that.
That was a good deal you pulled off there that night.
Yes, I was here, I'm not here, Schrödinger's selectman.
So with, so with that changed, are, are we all set, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'll stand.
Okay, department head reports.
You've got me together.
We, seen how we have Mike, who's gonna be at the other, do you want him to tot water first?
Um, sure.
We don't get to hear from you that often there, Mike.
Um, things are going pretty decently, actually, with the wood. Just a few minor problems with some of the main components, but nothing that we aren't pausing through. We did get our trailer in for the valve exerciser, so we're in the process of getting that kinda built and being on the road within a week or so. Our roof, I mean, does not leak anymore. Like everything else, it's hard to plan anything with the way the economy's going, or something breaks down and it's, you know, three months down the road. All in all, everything's looking pretty good.
Good.
We're making great water, the state's happy, I'm happy, so, everything's good.
Any questions from the board members?
I do have one question, how, how are we doing on that filtering system? If you need to replace.
I've gotten a quote, and I've handed it into Joe, for the, to have them both done at once, because they're both failing, just one's worse than the other. And for the two of them, with all the parts and pieces, is about $250,000.
Any, any other questions for water? Thank you, Mike. Joe, you're the rest of the show here.
So we'll start with our, with our police department. Our PD has nine arrests for the last two weeks. Traffic and municipal, municipal violations were issued, 214 municipal violations issued, 63 written warnings, no parking violations, one car crash, and nine sets of civilian fingerprints were done by our police department over the last two weeks. Oh, I have a couple of updates from our other departments.
Do we have any questions on police department? Okay, moving right on.
So, or down at the transfer station, um, if you're heading out there Thursday, and maybe even Saturday, their PA system died, the one that speaks out to the, to the scale. We did place an order to get one today, so hopefully that's there before the crush on Saturday. That's coming in, that'll be installed, and the swap shop's open, and we got a lot of good feedback from that. So, I'm happy to, happy to, to report that out. Mike was here, he gave you a quick update. Sewer, uh, we wanted to let the board know that Eli Charlton, um, he filled in while Kerry was on vacation. Uh, we, he was part of our intern program a few years back, we got him his license, and so now those benefits are kinda paying off, he comes back and helps when we need, so that's really, that's a positive thing. For the fire department, the chassis is in, and that went to the builder, so the, the new fire truck, they're gonna put the body, they're gonna build the body and put that on the chassis. In your packet, you'll see that that first payment did come out, so I think it was $114,000 for the chassis. From the manager's office, uh, the housing, the housing project on Prospect, that's still slowly chugging along. I did manage to get that surveyed and get the elevation certificate sent into the state. We'll see how that, how that works out. The accountant, Terry, the new accountant, and myself met with MVP, and talked about, uh, switching from Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, over to that new company. Rough estimate, maybe $6,000 savings to the town. This would also be a savings to our employees, too. The plans are pretty much the same, in some cases identical. So I'll, I'll meet with the, the union, just to talk to them about it and see how they feel. Our .gov emails, this has been something we've been trying to do for the last couple of years, we just haven't gotten around to it, uh, we finally got around to it, so we'll be getting .gov emails, so it'd be like fairhaven.towm manager@fairhaven.gov instead of Comcast. So that's moving forward. Um, our budget, I did freeze the budget, you'll see a few more trick, a few more purchases come in in the next couple of meetings, but we're trying to keep the, um, the purchases to a minimum for this last month, so that way our audit is clean, once we hit that July 1, that July 1 dead date. So, that's, that's happening. Ms. McNeil, uh, just an update on that, if, if Mary doesn't come in. So we have a tree on our side of the fence that we will take down, probably after July 1. There's a tree on the other side of the fence, not on our property, that needs to be taken down, and it's the other property owner's tree. So this is where the conflict is, I think Ms. McNeil would like me to take down the other owner's tree, and we don't, we don't do that. Um, I did notify our insurance company, and the homeowner doesn't know about the, the hazard, so if the tree does come down, that's, that's on him, that's just negligence at this point.
Is that West Street or South Side?
West, West Street.
West Street.
Uh, just a quick up, and I'm not a, I'm not an expert on this, but just a brief update, because in your package, you'll see a, a packet about the, what do we call it? The 1B application for the Act 250 program. Act 181, the subdivision regulations and neighborhood downtown designation, uh, this kinda all goes together to help Fairhaven build homes. This act, once we get to the Act, uh, the 1B application, will let us build houses, I think it's on 10 acres or less, 50 homes on 10 acres or less, without having to do the Act 250, if I understand correctly, so it is, it's huge for us. So that's kinda why we've been doing subdivision regs and, and moving forward with that stuff. If you see, the HVAC is still going in, those guys have done plugging away hard at it. For anybody who does use the transfer station, those stickers are for sale right now, they're $7, if you give a, an early bird bonus, so come on in, or you can buy them at the transfer station. Let's see. We had a parade on Saturday, which didn't turn out too awful bad, considering the weather. A little slow, but that's gonna be expected, it was cold and raining. And I got a little bit from DPW, if you wanna hear about that.
Sure, sure.
So we bent down to the transfer station, you see that road's been paved. This was a project that, uh, that they started 15 years ago, we finally got around to finishing it up. Roads are being graded, uh, public work started, the roadside mowing this week, last week, excuse me. They've done a couple of burials down, down at Cedar Grove. Oh, the entrance declared, "This is for you." Um, there was that big puddle near the bus stop, when you go into the park. They got in there and they fixed that today, so that puddle won't be, that puddle won't be there, and Mr. Green, oh, they moved that doggy bag post. And they moved it towards the, towards the fence. Uh, our guys went out and helped the cemetery, the cemetery crew prepare for Memorial Day, that's a big day for us here in Fairhaven, we honor our dead, we honor our, our soldiers, so they went out and cleaned up the cemetery. Out there doing cold patching, if you see 'em, please don't run 'em over. The parking spot, Roseanne, this is for you, that parking spot, we're gonna block off, that happens tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, and then we're gonna put up the, um, community billboard by the bus stop, that also happens tomorrow.
What parking space now is?
The one on the corner, right front of Cloud Nine, right by the phone pole there.
You can't see around that car.
Right.
And there's always somebody parked there, excuse me.
And, uh, going along with the roadside mowing, the guys are out there trimming up brush on River Street, too, so they've been, they've been pretty busy. And that is what I got for us.
Questions for Joe?
Um, any idea of how many people made use of the swap shop? I know you said the feedback was good.
I came home with a chainsaw.
Really?
Did you really?
Yeah. Uh, my only suggestion is, is getting some signage, because it's hard to tell that building's around the back of like the cardboard bits, I don't know if we get one of those big, like, banners, or whatever, like the heavy ones, or if we can move that dumpster. But you, you wouldn't know that building was there if you didn't, if you weren't familiar with the transfer station.
Well, we'll get something.
Yes.
No, I don't, I don't have numbers on it just yet, but I know the first day they had three, three people.
Yeah, Shane, Shane was pretty excited.
He was very excited.
Yeah.
He's taking a lot of ownership.
Any other questions?
Not so much a question, but, uh, it sounds like DPW's in the, uh, in the process of hanging some signs. I'm still safeguarding the Carnarvon and Fourth Street road sign that fell off in a, in a winter storm.
I'll get them, we'll get her.
It's, it's in, it's in safe custody.
We also have this sign out here in the front on the corner. They took it down for repair, but they haven't put it back up yet. The bases are right there, kinda low to the ground, it's kind of a tripping hazard for people. And I was afraid somebody was gonna trip on them during the parade this past weekend. They should be barricaded unless that sign gets put up ASAP.
I'll put some cones on there tonight, I got a couple in my trunk.
And we, we talked a lot about stuff going around the park there, that, that light pole replacement is on its way, uh, it's just, if, if you read the, if you read the minutes, that we were hoping to have it done by the 15th of May, it's, 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 we haven't forgotten about it, if anyone's wondering, it's, we just haven't, uh, building hasn't gotten it in yet.
Yep, so the last update, it was supposed to be installed before Memorial Day parade, and then here we are. And I never got a response back, I emailed today.
No, it was just to get an update.
Can I, can I add one more time?
Sure.
I don't wanna take up all your time, but, um, I got a, an email from Laura Bedoni, uh, and she was concerned about the rat problem in Fairhaven, somebody had taken a video and posted, uh, sent it to her at least. So we haven't, like, we knew about this in, like, come springtime, when we started back then with our health, our health officer and our police department. For those who have garbage sitting in and around the house, or at least around the house, it's gonna be a matter of, um, complying, or we're gonna come along and give you a ticket, and it's gonna be a force of compliance. I've ticketed a, a home here in Fairhaven, it cost them $10,000. We can give you a ticket every single day, and if I have to, that's what we'll do, it wouldn't be the first time. So we can't, we can't treat our neighbors so poorly, we have to take responsive, responsibility for ourselves and pick up after ourselves. So if that's what has to be done, that's what I will end up doing, but please, please pick up your garbage, it's causing a problem for your neighbors.
If we... Rose?
I'm just, just wondering, when you say the garbage, are you talking about garbage like in the big, what are they, 55 gallon, um, trash cans, or are just bags sitting out on the?
No, it's bags sitting out at the curb, it's mountains of garbage sitting by homes, it's, it, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, and some of the concern that we heard is, it's not, it's garbage, maybe some of it, but some of the vermin problem is, could be a combination of, uh, of a lot of different things going on here. The composting may not be properly being compost, we think we're composting correctly, and every critter you can imagine is probably coming on in, so we, we know where we're needing to work through, uh, 'cause some of this, it doesn't seem to be any particular place or street. I've, I've, I've heard the complaints from North Main, Allen, I mean, it's, it's, it's across.
Well, I think, in my personal opinion, composting definitely brought a lot of this on. Unless somebody has lime and stirs the compost and puts lime in it and has it, so the people, the rats and whatever can't get into it, then there's gonna be a problem.
But we're, but point taken, we're, we plan on doing some things to address some of it. If nothing else, I'm gonna move right along. It looks like, under old business, there's nothing there, so I'm going to move on to new business. Adoption of Tier 1B application, I know you talked a little bit about it, could you reach back on task on that?
Yep, so, um, I put adoption as the application, it's more like approval to, approval to begin the application. Um, it's, it's in the process, with our zoning regs being updated now. Rutland Regional Planning is helping us with this application, and our planning commission is, is doing the legwork. What we need from the board is a vote and approval to move forward, um, complete the application, and then submit it to the state for review.
And, and in that Act, uh, 250 application process, that's all part of the, up in Montpelier, they had, uh, some training, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission was doing on Act 181. Well, part, part of that is, and, uh, this, uh, different tiers, it's 1A, 1B, uh, or 1A, 1B, 2 and 3, I think there's three different tiers. Uh, but Devin Neary from Rutland Regional Planning is recommending that we, we've got what we need in place. And what that is, if we don't have it in place, it will be in place, that's why they're filling out the form, and that is, you need a town plan, which we have, zoning regs, which we have. You need subdivision guidelines, which, they're almost done, the planning commission writing them. They can't apply until September 1st again, but that looks good, it's all part of the downtown designation. You have to be in one of the designation areas, we already are a village designation, working on getting downtown and neighborhood designations. For those who are saying, so what do you, what is, uh, if you were to ask the question, what is the Tier 1B that we're asking the board to, to approve going forward? It really, it, it comes down to, uh, the, the difference is having, uh, being able to get, uh, some relief on Act 250, if you're in a downtown and you have 25 housing units that you're gonna put in. Ideally, when you're saying, well, where, why would you want that, Fairhaven? Think the, all the empty spaces downtown, if we were to get some monies to, to redo some apartments, a lot like, uh, one of our owners is done down by the movie theater, but there's a lot of space where you could probably get more apartments and things. Uh, so, more to follow on that, but that's, in a nutshell, what it's all about. So you're looking for, from us, a, a motion, and, and that's why I'm, it's...
Yeah, I'll make a motion, but I will say, too, uh, hey, I think if we look at the cost of living in Vermont, one of the single biggest drivers of cost of living is the shortage of housing units. And so we have opportunity to at least create, uh, create, uh, you know, I don't say the opportunity twice in a, in a paragraph, but create the opportunity for developers to come in and, and build more units, and hopefully drive down the cost of living for us, so. I'll make a motion to move forward, uh, and submit the Tier 1B application to the state of Vermont.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion Chad seconded by Sam, any questions?
I just, I just got one thing along that line. I know we like, we like more housing and all that. But we also have gotta have parking area to go along with this extra housing. So we always wanna keep that in mind.
Any other comments or questions? Then I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like it was unanimous. Okay, uh, the next item under new business is local emergency management plan adoption.
So this is our annual local emergency management plan, uh, update. We're asking the board to adopt this form. Uh, there were a few, a few updates that needed to be, to be changed, there were a few strike throughs that had to be corrected, which we did correct. Um, there was a typo that was brought to my attention, that that was corrected as well. Um, and I have a clean copy for the board in my manual approval. This is, this is only for the chair to sign, so we need a motion to allow the chair to sign this. What this is, um, for those of you new to this, uh, this, this is the go-to packet for who to contact and when to contact them in case emergency happens. So if we have extreme snowstorms, floods, um, even extreme heat, where we need to open a shelter, this is, this is the packet that we follow.
And, uh, just to, uh, share kudos with the local emergency management planning team, who was on that team for Fairhaven?
Oh, you know what, Jim updates this every year.
Excellent, thank you, Jim Heller. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the local emergency management plan and designate the board chair to sign said form.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? You know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous again. Okay, under new business, item C, appointment to the planning commission.
So I put that there just in case in the last three, four days, somebody stepped forward, uh, nobody did, so.
Okay, we had, we had one of our commissioners resign or sta, or needed, decided to step down, so we're just out there, if anyone's interested in serving on the planning commission, we do have an opening. All right, then we're moving right along to item nine on the agenda, we're doing our water budget review. Mike, we've got you up. Want, want to, how do you wanna go about, uh, doing this review? A, a brief, uh, what's going on, and then?
Yeah, you want me to do a quick overview and then?
And then, and then jump in?
Yep, uh, so the budget in front of you is what the, um, staff is proposing, it's up to select boards of fiscal year 26, where it's water department. Um, not a lot of surprises in here. Salaries were up a little bit, actually salaries, let me back up on that. Salaries actually came down a little bit for the water salary, uh, we eliminated the apprentice program. We, nobody's, nobody's applying, so I can't in good conscience keep asking the town for that money and then not spend it on that program, so, um, that's just, that's not, that's not the way I like to do business. We did see a s, a reduction in retirement, and you'll see a reduction in workers' comp, in fact. So we'll talk about that when we get there. Overall, what we proposed originally was a 1.76% increase, which is, um, very reasonable, I think.
And are you still proposing with those changes, 1.76?
That number will come down when we get to the, uh, the benefit section.
Okay. So, like we've done in past with these, maybe we could, what I, what I'd like to do is we'll start on page one. If any of the board members have any questions or anything, then we, we'll look to put, not on the hot seat there at all, Mike, but that, we'll, we'll look to you for some clarification. So let's start off with, oh, 206300 administration, any questions there? From the board. And that, and by the way, that, that came out to, most of those were pretty much level funded.
Yeah, it was a $1,000 increase this year, that was it.
Right. If nothing there, I'm gonna go to, uh, 0206310, the watershed, any questions there?
Joe, did you already, um, explain the increase in operating supplies, I'm sorry if I missed that.
I did not, but we have, look.
What I'm looking for, we have a fairly new scag that we're more aligned with. I don't know, I know since I've been here, you haven't been up to the dam.
Not yet.
We mow that, um, it's a, not a hiking trail, but people walk their dogs in the summer, families go up there. I would like to get myself a nice, nicer used lawnmower, instead of beating our scag to death. Have a, more like in the car terminology, you don't beat her, just for that purpose. Nothing fancy, just something to mow over the uneven path that goes up to the dam.
Any other questions underwater shed?
Uh, I guess this is a question for Mike. Mike, for the watershed salary, I know we, we typically don't use the whole 1,500. Would it be possible to move that number down from 15 to, say, 700? Or does that give you a hurry?
I would be comfortable going to 1,000, just because, well, I, I guess it depends on how many storms we have. The only, um, thing that gets put underwater shed is if there's a storm, we got tree, tree cleanup on the trail, or, um, the mowing, mostly for the watershed, that's all it entails. Um, once a year, we do make a track up to the old dams, just to make sure that they're still in condition. But other than that, there's not much that we do as far as watershed.
So, when I look at where we are on that, we can get 500 back there, one, can we change that to 1,000?
I mean... I think it'd probably be a good idea.
Let's change it to 1,000. Unless there's some, it looks like the, the actual, that's, that gives you, and you're comfortable with it, so, perfect. If there's nothing else on watershed, I wanna move on to water lines, oh, 206320.
What's our year-to-date actual on that? I'm looking at, I assume the FY '24 actual, the bulk of that $28,000 repair and maintenance... I'm looking at, I assume the FY24 actual, the bulk of that $28,000 repair and maintenance supplies was related to the airport road line. I see that the proposed budget is, uh, the same as the FY25 budget, but.
Your question of what's the water lines actual?
So we're at 25.4 now, about 96% of budget.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Any other questions underwater lines? I have a small tools and equipment. It looks like we want four grand. We've done everything from, our actuals were 1,300 and then it went to 3,002. Four gr- is, is there something else like that more you're getting is why it's?
Um, well, no, that wouldn't be underwater lines. Um.
No, but I mean, well, are you?
Claiming jewel book, there's a water department, we're doing more and more things. Um, we are fixing curb stop, cats, um, risers. Jeff and I come across. So without talking to Nate to see where he orders these things from, I just put down a number until, I guess for the notice, until I get some firm figures as far as, you know, the price of each. I mean, just off the top of my head, I can come up probably eight or nine that need to be fixed. And as Jeff and I get to them, and we can fix them with the small tools and stuff that we have, instead of bringing out the excavator and digging the hole.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask him, because it looked like in '23, it was nothing in the budget. And then there was, uh, and the budget in '24 was zero dollars. Then we, we, so I was just wondering why we went from zero and four grand, I said, okay, what do, what are we buying?
Well, and that was my thinking behind it. Plus there's more things that I'm, as I've said in the past, that I'm, that morning as I go, I'm putting them under the right line.
And when I, water line, small tools. I'm just looking to see what we've spent so far this year. We've spent, uh, underwater line, small tools and equipment, $475 and 36 cents.
I believe in this week's expense approval, um, the trailer and everything on that will come out of that, which is going to be $2,000 roughly.
I guess what I'm, what I'm looking for, Mike, is can that 4,000 be 2,000? I'm, I'm looking to try to level, I'm trying to level load unless you're telling me, uh, I get, you gotta pick up bottles on the side of the road in order to pay for, for the equipment. You know?
Oh, no, I'll just turn off the bell and go home.
It's new, that's why.
Right, and like I said, I don't have a firm figure as far as parts and stuff like that going, so I can't sit here and justify saying that it's 84,000 or more, because at this point, I guess I really don't know. I don't know if 2,000 will be enough, but we can start there, being able to get done.
Is there a reserve fund? Is there a reserve fund?
Yes.
How much, I mean, I would imagine if, if we put it, if we drop it to two and something came up that required a few thousand dollars or more, we've got a reserve fund that can help out with that.
We do. I, I'm, again, I'm just trying to come up with the money that's going to get us close to level.
And like I said, until we actually get up there, start replacing some of this stuff and knowing how much it's going to.
We, we get a little track record to see what we're spending. How, how does everyone feel about moving that four to 2,000?
I don't see much of any reserve bills in here where, so far. And I, I don't know if we should, capital improvement would be a reserve.
That's, that, we're not there yet, but that bottom line, it says 30,000 is a deposit into your capital reserve. Your water capital reserve currently has $263,000 in it.
Yeah, you got a lot of money. Can you reserve a cap?
I mean, so, and I know that's going to change, so we're, we're up 1.76 currently sitting at this. And I know the specialty tools and the risers and stuff, those can be costly. So I, I know he's, you know, we've had years, zero, 1,300, so on. I, I say this year, leave it at 4,000. And then next year, adjust it from there, see where he starts with. I mean, 1.76 is really not that bad of an increase, I don't think. That's pretty good.
Well, one of the things, it's not a bad increase, but I want to challenge you to say, we inflated for COVID and what we thought we, and so we didn't, we put the numbers up pretty high. If we are ever going to level, I looked this year where we were and I said, should be pretty easy to level fund water and sewer this year. If we can't level fund this year.
What if we did?
I don't know if we have.
What if we did 3,000? What's the difference? Go, go right in the middle here. It would save a little bit and we still have a fair amount there to work with.
3,000 would be closer to the actual fiscal year 24.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
3,000, I can live with that.
I would say that might be the logical way to go.
Let's change that 4,000 to 3,000. I think we just paid with your, with your, with that 1,500, but you just got that mower. So we're packed even. Anything else on water lines? If not, I'm going to move us on to water meters. Any question on water meters?
What falls under machinery and equipment for water meters?
It would be, if you have business come in that needs a new larger diameter meter. Pretty much right now, that's all it is. Our readers, our meters, everything are working fine. The meters were guaranteed for 20 years. Our readers, the biggest thing now is like their licensing fees and stuff. I just had to go and buy a tab, a new tablet that took one of those 11. But other than that, there's really nothing but replacing meters.
Well, how many years into these meters are we now in?
For the first one, six years, just before COVID hit.
Six years.
And I always like to look at our general ledger to say, okay, what have, what have we spent right now with only six weeks left to go? Uh, we have 1,500 in there and we haven't spent anything.
Haven't had to buy any meters.
Haven't had to buy any meters. So that's why I'm saying, if you're wondering, is that pretty comfortable with the new meters? You'd expect, but I, you keep it there in case you.
Well, I've been, um, I was telling Joe this afternoon, actually, that we're, or I'm going to be needing to buy meters, which I haven't had to do since we got our first, or, you know, what was included.
Since we went through.
Just to get ready for winter, I think I've got seven left. I'm going to be able to do 200 or 1,000.
Good.
So, and of course they've gone up from 170 to 250 now, but, you know, everything else has also.
So the meters that you buy, um, to hold and reserve for winter, those seven units that you just mentioned, that comes out of the 1,500?
That, that will, yes.
In machinery and equipment? Okay. And then when the individual property owner pays the, it's like 250 or so for the meter to replace? Does that count as revenues or how does that actually?
Yeah, that, yeah, that'll go into the water revenues. It'll, it'll, that helps offset the time it takes for our staff to install the meter as well as the cost of meter.
And any new construction, what, up on the cap, these three, 33, 35. There's two meters that got put into new also.
So we're good on water meters? Let's move on to water treatment facility. And that is oh, 206380. Any questions there?
Uh, what falls under other purchased services?
That I'm starting to put in for the actual other purchase services. Um, door and septic to come out and, to come up and pump our holding tank. EOS, which is part of our, um, airport valve telemetry. There is mission, which is also the, um, telemetry from the south tank levels. Those are all other purchase services. That's not part of my daily supply that I need to run the plant, but it's also a service that I need.
Are those currently, uh, placed as a line item of other purchase services? Or are we adding those into?
I am.
Next year's budget?
I am moving them over.
Okay.
Into other purchase services. In the past, they've always been included as part of the general supply.
Just a question, because when I see on other purchase services, in fiscal year 23, we, we spent 8,700. 24, we spent 14,600. We're proposing 15,000. I'm looking at what we've got under other purchase services and we've only spent 5,971. So I'm, I'm looking at that 15 going. I would, I would think you could save 10,000, probably feels right. There might've been a flyer. I don't know what happened, uh, under, to get us to 14,000 out of fiscal year 24, but 15 seems high based on when, when we get done for fiscal year 25, we're, we're, we're at 62% of what, what we put in, uh, there. Just curious if we could take some out of that. There, it looks like there's about five grand there. Unless I, unless there's something, no, I, I'm, unless there's something we were going to put in the other purchase services next year that we're counting on, it, it looked like we could, we could take some money out of that. In other words, when, when I'm saying there was a 25% increase in that, uh, and I'm, I'm saying, can, can we make, do 10,000 versus 15,000? That's what I'm asking the board. Because I don't see, I don't see the, I don't know what caused the, we had probably in '24, we had a few, we've had a few things out of the ordinary that we've reached in and done. Water line break, and then it was that electrical box that, that took, so I understand whether if we took it in a couple of places to pay for that, it's okay too. But it, it feels more like it, that other purchase service, that, that's pretty, that 15,000 seems a little high.
And also other purchase services, like, um, Roger Repair Shop, they rebuilt one of our motors. You know, so all those things are actually other purchase services. It's not an operating supply. So, you know, these things, I'm slowly, as I come across them, moving them into other purchase services. So, you know, one line may be coming down while that one's going up.
Yeah. Again, when, when I see a 25% increase, I'll go zero right in on that and say, okay. So, so the reason is, so, so the reason is, we're going to have re, so if you were to tell me, because I'm going to spend an extra 8,000 rebuilding something, then right there, I'm going, okay, I understand what you're going to do. We've got, we got to fix what's there, but.
Okay, we'll save, we'll save the 5,000. You give me the 250,000, we'll rebuild the filters and we won't have any more.
No. But again, I'd say, I, I, I'm, I'm looking at, am I, uh, what's your pleasure? I'm just throwing what I saw on your.
Well, I mean, it looks like we're under budget so far on both operating supplies and other purchase services. We're proposing 47,000 between the two of them and it, I, it'd probably be a stretch to say we'd end at 36 at the end of this fiscal year.
Right.
So unless, unless there's other purchase services that we're anticipating in the next year, if it's the usual other purchase services, going from one line to the other, I, I think we'll have plenty if we, if we have a combination of 32 and 10.
Again, I'm, I'm thinking of right around 8,000 to level fund water, just, just so you understand why, why I'm saying, give me 5,000 there. What we have, I'm getting pretty close to level fund.
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee or have anything planned or in the works.
Right now?
Any drastic increase, you know, I'm, I'm not adding new service or anything like that.
Because I don't want to hurt you. Which, which is a pleasure, board.
So.
I'm proposing we take that 15,000 and turn it into 10 under other purchase services, oh, 206380.
Fiscal year 25, we spent 12,000. '24, we spent 14. Can we call it 12, since that's what we spent?
But we didn't spend, it was, that was the budget.
Okay.
And, and we've.
We're at almost 6,000, just under 600.
That's, because sometimes you'll get a flyer, just because you got a flyer, doesn't mean that from that point on, it stays that high. I, I'm, we're just trying.
So yeah, so 10's fine.
I'm good with 10.
I think, and it, because.
I think 10 is a fair, is a fair.
Let's, let's move that one back to 10. Okay. Anything else under water treatment facility?
Did someone already state what accounted for the 36,000 plus that was spent in 2024 under repairs and maintenance?
Oh, did you report?
Did you?
Probably, yeah, probably that water. Now, I, I put down a little note, if it wasn't the airport, it was that electrical, you had a major problem with boxes and changing. That costs quite a bit of money up there too.
So that was the rasp visits that.
Rasp, okay, okay.
Rasp was a vendor we had to do.
Sometimes you have those one offs.
And, you know, that is something that was done, shouldn't be needed anymore, that expense.
Are we all set so I can move on to debt service water? Okay, any questions on debt service water?
That's just the bond, right?
That's actually two bonds. Yeah, one is 39, um, just a little more than 39,000, the other one is just more than 43,000. The one under that is interest on one of those, on those bonds. The other bond was interest free.
No living room there.
I think some of them, it just is what it is. Yeah, there's no pushing back. So, so if we're good on, on debt service, we're going in the area that I'm usually very careful, because it's thin ice when you start talking benefits and I'm, and I start getting out of my realm, but I, I, let's talk benefits, because I think there's some things we need to talk about there.
Okay, so this is.
Joe, you want to?
Let me, let me lead with retirement. So if you look at our, our actuals from the past, we're at 6,723, uh, 6,124. We don't expect those numbers to go up over 7,000. In years past, we had changes in, uh, we got rid of the intern, which didn't impact that very much, but, um, we also had a long-term employee that left. So, um, I'm proposing to move that from the 10,000, what was it at, 10.5? Down to 7,000. That should, that should cover us.
So we're moving from 10.6 down to 7,000.
10.6 to 7. And then you have one more, one more good opportunity to save money under the workman's account. I got updated numbers from VLCT today, which. Should be about 16, 16,000 between water and sewer both. So, um, $8,300 for this department. So that, um, what was it at, 12,000?
Instead of 12.5, it's 8,300? Okay.
So that'll save you a little bit of money.
Because those numbers, they are what they are.
Twelve thousand five.
Good with benefits. Water, where are we at? Water reserve allocations? Oh, two oh ninety-seven ninety. I don't see anything. And water capital improvement, unless I hear something that's oh two oh ninety-seven ninety.
I think that's good.
Yeah, I mean, even though it's going, it's a fifty percent increase and everything, I'm saying, yeah, you gotta keep putting the. Vehicle replacement. And and I I look that we're putting, are we just getting back the two thousand five hundred? I keep looking that our actual is we do. It looks like we we do nothing in twenty-three for vehicle replacement. Nothing in fiscal year twenty-four. Nothing was in the budget for fiscal year twenty-five. Twenty-six, we're two thousand five hundred, but it's time to start putting some money because that truck, you're going to wear it out. It's what I it's what I figured, but I just wanted to hear from you that that's you're going to want to buy a truck eventually.
And yeah, I mean, it's not like all of a sudden I come to you guys and I need thirty grand for a new truck.
Because we'd we'd say, do you have thirty grand?
Yeah. So I just figured, you know, I'd start off with that and let the board either take it away or add to it as.
Many how many miles on that truck, Mike?
Nine thousand.
And what year did you say it was?
Nineteen. But it's a lot of starting stop. Most of that is three meters every month or every week rather. And especially now with the trailer, we're going to be hauling a trailer for the valve exercise and the hydro pushers once a year. It's not it's not like we put a hundred thousand miles on it.
I I'm sure I'm sure the truck's going to last a good many years, yeah, but I think that's fair to start.
Right.
With the price of a truck, yeah.
Turn it in next year.
Good. What what is the number? What did you when you did you make those changes while going through? I was just curious of what whether we how close we got to being level funded?
You guys did a great job. You're currently one point, one point one seven percent down. So you're you scraped out five thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars from from lower than last year's budget.
Well, that's good because I wanted to add to it because I forgot until you didn't remind me.
No, I'm not. We're not done.
Going going back to water lines.
Okay, water lines. And that's oh two oh sixty-three twenty.
Um, this would be probably a I don't know, I guess you could put it under.
Other purchase services down there is a pretty good catch-all. What do you?
Could have somebody there.
This technically probably could fall under that. This stuff was put in, partially put in, not finished when I started. Um, to get it back up and running, which would be pressure on each sides of the valve, which, you know, since we're still talking about the airport break, would flop an alarm because we would lose so much pressure. It will monitor the pressure, but being seven plus years old, like everything else electronics, it's obsolete. Yeah, they could hook up what's there, but if something needs to be fixed, they have my parts for it.
How much are you asking for, Mike?
Well, I ended I gave Joe the paperwork and I want to say it's like thirty-five hundred.
Close thirty-nine, four thousand, thirty-nine, sixty-five, forty.
And that would bring everything up to the.
That thirty.
Airport valve?
Yep. So right now, there is only a timer which opens and closes. This here would monitor the pressure on each side of that valve and let us know if there is an issue.
Is this?
The valve's closed, but it much isn't really going to pinpoint or narrow it down a whole lot. But we would know in a hurry that we got to break somewhere because we're moving pressure on the salt cell coming out of the salt. And vice versa, when the valve is open.
What's what's your timetable to Italy if if we were to do this? What would it be?
Um, I've talked to the chairman and associates at a trade show, and I guess it depends from my understanding of what they're talking about, getting everything together before they do it. Then roughly, they're saying it's roughly about a month.
I'm just wondering if it's something we approved with we approved with the remaining budget of this year. Then we keep the plan for the budget for the following fiscal year.
Do are you are you going to come in under budget? By four thousand and you just and you spend instead of us changing year. I think I'm pretty sure you're going to come in on the budget by what's when I look down.
Joel's standing behind me on this one. I'm shocked or so.
You're at eighty?
Because we have in the power at one place.
You're you're at eighty?
I don't order it just for that.
Eighty-six point three percent of the budget spent. I I I think would imagine there's probably room in this fiscal year's budget to tackle that.
To just go out and buy buy that without changing?
Changing the extra budget.
Yeah, but either way, you get your sensor unit, and that's what we're looking for, right?
Tell them tomorrow and tell them to punch on the end as soon as you can. Yeah, that's satisfactory with everybody.
Does that work for you, Joe?
That's perfect.
Yeah. So that way.
Actually, it makes more sense to do it that way.
Money we've already taken from folks, yeah.
I just got that fault, so I heard her, you know, not to spring it on anybody that.
Any other questions or anything else you want to you want to add, Mike?
Well, that was the the thing that I remembered as we're going through everything else.
Great job on your budget this year.
Yeah, I I think you do a nice job of.
I just got one thing. Now that we're on water. We have that leak up there at the dam. That's been there for many years.
Been years.
Do you think we should be starting to address that problem?
For the for the little bit that it's getting worse, I don't think it's anything drastic or, you know, you can worry about it. I'm not a geologist. I mean, it could go two years or it could go two hundred.
Has a geologist looked at it?
Uh, just an engineer's.
Well, just just, you know, it's there and uh.
It's there and and anyway, that's been here.
We don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen, but let's maybe get.
It it used to stop during the summer, from what I've been told, talking to some of the people that have been here. I mean, Joe's been up there. It's constant. It's has never stopped in the last five years. Um, so I'm I'm not going to say it's getting worse. But it's 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 not stopping in the summer like it has in the past.
Well, I just I just don't know. It's concern. It's a concerning thing, that's all.
Yeah, we we talked about it a couple of times a year. Um, do you think it's possible to get Aldridge and Elliot, since we are going to be under budget, to get up there with a camera and just see what they can see, just to make sure it's not giving?
Um, actually, he was there when we addressed it, two years ago.
Two years ago.
That's when we drilled the hole in the cinder block wall. There's no water in between there, so it's it's not the head wall leaking. It's definitely coming through the ledge. Beyond that, I can't tell you where it's coming from, but it's not coming through the tunnel where the pipe is.
Yeah, it's not a structural. I was okay.
It's not a structural.
It's not a structural failure from our our. It's actually the ledge.
It's actually the ledge itself.
Okay.
Which is different. Yeah, I mean, I think, right, I think we keep monitoring it, but I.
Like I said, I mean.
I wouldn't even know.
I I don't want to say it's never going to happen. I mean, it could be five thousand years ago, but we're reading.
Good.
So it's a possibility it's coming through the ledge and not the damn structure, so.
Exactly. They did did drill through the center water, the tettwool. And there's this gap in between from the lake side and the tunnel side. In between is dry. There's nothing there. So that water is seeping through the ledge, the rock. And my guess is as good as yours as far as, you know, how much rock moves and.
Right. Anything else from my? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to two minutes for public comment. Mr. Dorn.
A few years back, maybe like thirty, thirty-five, I'm not quite sure. I acquired a piece of land on town highway sixty-three. It's called it's called Nivo. And I swapped that land for a piece of land that the town of Fairhaven, it was a swap. And they were going to use it for a transfer station, but they never did. And there's an issue with it. Nobody knows who owns it. There there haven't been any taxes paid on it. Well, how many years, Joe?
Oh. No taxes were paid since I've been here, so that's about nine years, eight years, excuse me.
About sixty or seventy years. There was no taxes that were paid on. I don't know why the town didn't have a tax sale or something, but anyway, I'm paying taxes on it now. I have a I have a quick claim date. And I cleaned the property. I put a ten thousand dollar water line in down there. I cleaned the property up. I got rid of there's a whole bunch of fifty, sixty year condominium down the hall of the place. And uh I got rid of all those tubes. Those were nasty. I got rid of the house that was full of mold and mildew and leaking roof. We cleaned the property up. And I I like to see what I can do about owning that property outright. There's no no one non person that owned it.
There's a hundred ninety-nine year lease on that. It's up in, what, twenty thirty?
Yeah, in twenty thirty.
There's nothing to be done till then.
Till twenty thirty.
It's not ours to sell.
Yeah. And I'm just because it's two minutes for public comment. I want to I want to make sure we we keep to. Understood, have you talked? Is the you and Joe get together or you have you are having conversations? Because that would be the direction.
It's a ninety-nine year lease. And who leased it?
Uh, it's I I don't remember the person's name. They leased it to the town, and the town leased it to somebody, and then somebody else leased it and currently, we don't control it. It's not our property, not our lease. The 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 heirs to the original lease lesser will take possession of it, but we don't know who that is. So I I expect a tax sale coming along in ninety and one hundred years.
Would would like to keep to our two minutes for public comment, too, so it's but it's one I I would continue working. It sounds like you're working the issue with with Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Russ?
I have two questions.
Yeah.
Um, have we heard at all about when the the fence at Saint Mary Cemetery that was taken out? Have we heard anything about that being replaced?
That would be up to the church.
Right, it's private.
I spoke with Mary Jane swallowing over the weekend, and it's in the works.
It is. I mean, I know it's been cleaned up. It looks much nicer.
They were waiting for the insurance. It's it's going to happen.
Okay. Uh, my second question is the water project for Prospect Street. When is that supposed to start? I I see things accumulating over there, so I'm expecting it to start here pretty soon. When is it supposed to start? What will the effect be like? Are you going to have like, well, one lane road or is Prospect going to be completely cut off or and how long is it supposed to take?
It I I'm going to say because it's for comment, not full discussion. I I believe, Joe, I don't I don't want to speak for you, but as soon as that's supposed to happen this summer, but I don't think we don't have anything. But but other than to be as soon as there are specifics, we'll be putting those out. Good. Thank you. Any other? Seeing I'm going to move on to parking lot. Anything in the parking lot, board?
I don't have anything.
Moving right along, round table. Sam, anything to share?
Nothing here.
You're not going to share with the group about your new subcommittee that you've got volunteered for?
I'm not going to share that.
Not today, okay. Mr. Dorn?
Yeah, uh, I don't know. A couple of weeks ago, I saw a record, I think in the Rutland Herald or somewhere social media or something about there was like a food truck thing in Rutland and.
Well, in West Rutland?
Yeah, something like that, and it kind of disappeared or something. Fees got out of hand. And I thought it'd be potentially a good opportunity. I don't know. I don't think we have any ordinances or regulations around food trucks, but I think be something for us to look into to potentially do, try getting a weekly food truck rally here in the park or something in the summer. I know we have, there's a young lady down in Pulte that started food truck last year, and she bounces between Pulte and Castleton twice, two or three times a week. Um, and I think she was here over the weekend, set up. I know she was always looking for us, and I know there's quite a few food trucks in the area, so I don't know. Something we potentially look into doing or, you know, at least hammering out some kind of.
Do we have a policy on food trucks?
It falls under the itinerary vendor policy and something like five dollars. Don't quote me on that number, but it's a low number.
I mean, my my concern.
Anybody can set up a food truck if they pay their five bucks.
Whatever the fee is, yeah.
We've we've done it a couple of times.
We used to have people set up, but Roland Rooster came in and they got their their permit this year.
My only my only concern, I always look for where's the gremlin on this one? If I was a business that was selling food, I'd and the board decided to make a decision to bring something that would be in competition to my places that are here paying taxes, selling food. I know I I'm just saying before we'd make the decision, I'd want it as an agenda item. Everyone have a chance to come in and talk so we'd we'd know everything there. I I wouldn't be I wouldn't be in favor arbitrarily.
Food trucks are a specialty thing, right? And you see them all. I mean, all over. I mean, where's up in Maine, there's a whole food truck alley. I mean, they're I don't think they're going to take away from business. I think it's gonna I think it's another way to bring revenue into town, attract people into town.
I agree with Glenn, though, that it does tend to be a common complaint among local business owners whenever there's a even a farmer's market or food trucks that it might, you know, detract from their business. Not that being said, I wasn't sure exactly what you had in mind or what the proposal was, so.
But I mean, I'm all in favor of, I don't think we ever ran into any trouble with food trucks when there was special event. Like when they had some, what's that special marijuana day and by cloud nine, we brought two food trucks in. And you have some other event and we had had something. But to have food trucks come in as a regular basis and set up, I I'd want to hear and talk a lot more before I would think that was something.
What 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 was the thought you had, Mike? Was there an organizer?
No, I just it it just, no, I just, I mean, they're pretty popular, right? And like, you know, Fair Haven has a very select restaurants in town, right? And most of them. restaurants in town, right? And most of them don't cater to dinner. Then the ones that do are a niche, right? And that's not everybody's cup of tea. I mean, I, I find it difficult. If we go out to there and typically we're going to Rutland or Queensberry, right? But it'd be nice. I mean, you've got the snack bar, but you know, you drive by that and that place is packed.
Because we don't want to go.
Right. You know, or you drive in Grandville. I mean, I think, you know, just to kind of bring some stuff into Fairhaven, I think that'd be a, you know, try it out for a few weeks, weekly one, you know, you got, what, what day is the concert in the parks? Thursday, so you say either, you know, Friday or Saturday nights or afternoons for a couple hours, it's food truck.
And we simply like promote that this is, would be a good time to.
Before we get into a major discussion again, would not support any decision until we got down to agenda, got people talking and all the pros and cons. Go ahead, Russ.
But I just want to point out that the only place open in Fairhaven Monday nights, and if I remember correctly, Tuesday nights as well, is McDonald's. And Fairhaven Inn.
And you go Pultley and most of those places there, if you don't have a reservation, you can't get in, like the pub and then a lot of those places. A lot of local places, you can't even get into it as a right, you know, a local.
I think for Monday or Tuesday, it would be a public service.
Absolutely.
I'm just, I mean, we talk about it all the time, right? And I didn't have to take up it, I mean, we have this huge park, right? That I think goes to waste ninety percent of the year, right? You've got a few nice months of the summer. Why not bring, we hear it all the time, people wish there was more here. Nobody else is really doing it. You don't see Cassleton doing it or Pultley or, I mean, Pultley does like an art day. They do, I mean, Pultley does a decent amount. It'd be nice to add something, but, but, yeah.
The, the trucks we used to get a couple of years back, um, they draw, they drew people downtown. And then those people went to, you know, they went to the little thrift store and then they went to the brewery and then they maybe they went across the street.
Right.
It's more of a, it's, it's not, it's an impediment to.
If, if you draw people, more people bodies in, they have a tendency to spread out to these other places that normally wouldn't have them people. So competition is very good and it's very, very healthy, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Right, I'm, I'm not, I'm just.
I just, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, talk about it further, that's all.
Put it on potential agenda?
Uh, what if we brought the rec director and had him do some research and then bring something?
Get some more, get some more facts, because it sounds, it would want, would want to see a lot more because, um, so we can re, uh, look at all the pros and cons.
I agree.
Yeah.
I'd be interested in hearing the rec director's thoughts.
Yep. Rich?
Oh, I don't know if you want to hear it from me. But here we go. Um, it was brought to my attention just recently by a, some folks. That it's a possibility that, uh, in our park, our beautiful park that we're talking about, um, we do some sort of, uh, in memory benches to replace our benches that are bad, the ones that are real bad shape. You know, in memory of so and so. We just had one put in recently and that's what spurred the idea that other people may want to do this. Um, and I just wanted to see how the rest of the board felt about it.
I don't think it's out of the hour. Or, man, that feels like it's a pretty common thing, right? You know, people do it all the time, pay whatever, X amount.
I mean.
I think we just had this conversation too, as a board, didn't we? There was an individual.
We just had an individual ask permission to pull one in and, and that's come out really nice. More of the same, basically, if people are interested in doing it.
We, I wonder if, but wouldn't you want a process? Uh, I, I, yeah, we'd want, we, we did a one of, but if we were going to go, wouldn't we want to say, this is, if you're interested, contact this and it, and I hate to keep putting stuff on Reese's plate, but I'm, but I'm saying, who's the person who's responsible for the, there has to be a place or a focal point you'd go. Here's the process, because I think there would become a point.
Yeah.
Where you, you don't want more benches than grass, uh, uh, down there for, for mall.
And also, and also along that lines, it's not just benches that we need to replace. We also need to add some more picnic tables at some point.
Exactly.
Uh, and, uh, but again, there should be a standard.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want nine thousand different benches. We want a standard, you know?
What else do you have, Rich?
I would like to, uh, I noticed that you had a meeting with the engineer about the paving. Uh, I would like to make sure that before we pave Main Street, that we have the catch basins collecting the water instead of the water running around them. And because it doesn't do any good, if the water can't get through the catch basins and into the DIs, just don't work.
As part of that project, the rehabbing.
I noticed it, but I just, I always want to make sure it happens. It, a lot of times it doesn't happen and it's, it just.
We can, we can, somebody just stand there and watch them. If that's what we need to do, that's what we need to do, but it's just, it's going, there's going to be money involved.
Right, if you get a project manager on that.
But that's just food for thought down the road.
I agree with you. Sometimes things don't happen the way we want them to.
What else do you have?
That's it. I'll save some for next week.
Did you?
Something occurred to me, but I think I could leave it for another time.
Chad?
Oh, uh, I don't want to bring up what, what Michael was saying, but I, you know, I was reflecting after Spring Fling and the parade. And I was thinking about Applefest and, you know, wondering if, if the town would have interest in, um, increasing our help to those organizations that run those events. Um, you know, just seeing, seeing what those events bring in terms of potential. Um, you know, I think if there were more hands that could help in bringing more vendors in, it could be, it could be, uh, pretty big. I know the rain kind of dampened some things this year, but, um, I, I think we've got some incredible opportunity, uh, to, to, uh, have kind of the go-to events on those days for the, for the area.
Which organizations are those that are the chief organizers of those two events? I'm not sure I know.
So the Lakes Region Chamber of Commerce puts together the, um, the Spring Fling event. We put together the Memorial Day Parade, uh, and Ceremony. And the school, uh, the grade school, uh, puts together Applefest.
Yep, and this year, we're, we are also sponsoring the Lumberjack, uh, which is in July. So there's, when you're talking, there's, there's, there's three, but.
Yeah.
Don't forget the car show.
Which is the, right, which the chamber.
July, I believe.
The, and, and the, the chamber does the car show.
Yeah, so I, I'm thinking like our larger vendor oriented, um, uh, days. It does, and has occurred to me often, that Spring Fling and, and Applefest especially could perhaps be boosted up a bit. And I don't know.
So, so now we're talking about this, so like, right, Memorial Day, the townwide, everybody on social media plays, you know, look at all these other towns that advertise the townwide while advancing, it seems like Fairhaven's kind of just.
So there, there was a, there was a committee that looked at, you know, how do we, how do we expand this? There was a revenue generating committee that we put together a few years back and, uh, ultimately, at the end of the day, it boiled down to who's volunteering.
Right, right.
Because that was a big thing, like how do we advertise this? How do we get more people interested in yard sailing specifically on these days? And, uh, you know, it's hard to, hard to advertise when no one's willing to do it at an unpaid rate. But now with the rec director, I think there's some opportunity to, to help out. You know, I think about Applefest, I don't, I don't think we, I mean, maybe one orchard. Uh, like, we could, we could make Applefest out of it, right? There's, there's some opportunity. Um, but it would, it would take, I think, the arm of the town to help bolster, because the, those grade schools stretch then, the Chamber of Commerce is stretched then, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to, to take over, but I think we can, we can support in a different way.
Rich, ultimately it comes down to, you know, they, they organize it, but brings revenue into the town, right? So that benefits us.
I, I think, I'm just trying to think, I'm right down the same line with that. I got a phone call from Sean Galvez who, uh, said, hey, you know, would really like to see more with, with the Memorial Day Parade and, and Spring Fling and getting things happening. That, that if that was a, a committee with someone from the Legion, so, our, our rec director from here and maybe someone else and, but the more I'm thinking, do we take, I like your idea of looking at all the major events. Do we take a meeting like, uh, out there once we get the, the water and sewer budget, say the June twenty-fourth meeting? And say, let's do a portion where we let the folks who do those events come in and, and you talk some about, how do we, how can we, the town, help you? What do you need and how can we do things better? Is that something that this board would be interested in?
And a big thing too is, and I don't know about around here, but like fireworks, right? I mean, Pultley's show, you sit down there for two hours and it's a ten minute show. I don't think those Bombazine still do theirs anymore.
I thought they did have Crystal Beach.
Right, but I mean, it's, you know, it's still an opportunity, I think, you know, I've seen, we have a fireworks vendor in town, you know? There's a lot of opportunity out there. I think you'd be, you know, you rely on other towns, but let's figure out a way to draw more of this stuff here, you know? So people aren't having to travel to Ticonderoga or Queensberry or wherever, you know?
We can always, we can always do.
Get the whole airport.
So fireworks shows were fifty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're pretty.
This is, this is something I wanted to do.
We don't get twenty-five dollars a boot doesn't, doesn't get us the.
Look at like what the Castle and Rec's doing. They're raising money, you know, these membership packages to raise money to redo the rec building down there, you know, you could do sponsorships.
There's, there's, there's some fundraising that can happen that, that, that maybe, maybe it needs seed money from us, the town, but there's some things.
Yeah, I think their, their rec right now and their fundraising efforts are really about getting the facilities up to twenty-twenty-five. Um, you know, but I, I, yeah, I see some opportunity to do some events.
Right, and we're, and we're, we're going the right step, right? Like think about, and you know, you've been down a lot down there in the fields and, you know, I remember what it was like growing up and it's nice to see it kind of come back, you know?
Anything else? I'm good. I can remember. Can we move on to reviewing the financial reports?
Oh, I don't have figures in front of me. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the payroll warrant of forty thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-six cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Rich. Everyone know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the general warrant of two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents.
We have a second?
I will second that motion.
Sam? Okay, everyone in favor?
Aye.
It was a pretty good sized payment for the chassis on the fire truck, in case you wonder why that was so.
It was a hundred and fourteen or hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
And the checkbook sits at seven hundred and two thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into executive session under.
Go contract.
For contract negotiations and civil litigation under one VSA three thirteen A one.
Second?
Reporting stop.
All those in favor?
Aye.